Good evening, good evening. Welcome to the Newport Board of Education regular meeting. May I have a roll call please?
We're not in a line.
Here.
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 And Pearl.
Here.
And Davis.
Here.
You all will be joining to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll have a longer reflection. All right. Ed Davis, do you have your computer?
I do.
Do you have the... Do you have the agenda up?
I'm... Actually, my password is not...
Okay, all right. Well, Mr. Sutton, if you would read our mission statement.
The Newport Independent School District will partner with families in this community to nurture education and still core values in all students to ensure that they reach their fullest potential.
Very good, thank you. First on our agenda is our favorite part, is recognition of student and teachers. All right, well, first up, as always, start with the primary school. Our new student here today.
Yes. A student and a teacher at the same time. All right, good idea because Ms. Powell's a teacher among, and Lyra's a student, she's a student among, so it works out well, so. First of all, Lyra, Lyra's a second grade student in primary school, and in Ms. Powell's class. Ask her teachers just to share a few things about her, and since she's an absolute joy to have in class. She tries her best, and is respectful, she's a good friend, and a helper. They talk about how quiet she is, but that she leads by example, and that other students follow her. So, not only is she quiet and leading, but she gives her peers a comfortable and good way as well. So, please congratulate Lyra, the manager of student. And then Ms. Powell is our teacher of the month. As I said, Ms. Powell is Lyra in class. And this is her fifth year at primary, and let's share a few things about Jamie. First, she's a competent professional. She can always be counted on to do what's best for students, you know, P L Ts or just leading instructionally. Does a great job of sharing her opinion and voice with just us in a respectful way. So, she can disagree professionally and still say very good respect. I'd also like to give her a shout out just being really flexible. Last year, we had a resignation late this summer, and Jamie immediately came in and said, "I'll move with Jamie too." So, she took that initiative, and I really appreciated that, and it really makes it easy. Also, we're piloting a reading foundational program for about thirty minutes today. Ms. Powell jumped in right away, and was like, "We got this, I'm gonna try this," and she's doing a great job of that as well, so, thank you both.
Sorry, I apologize for being late. We're wrapping up interviews today. I don't think either of mine people got to come today. One of our plan of the month is Aliyah Vanderbilt. So, she is a wonderful sixth grade student. She's one of our highest performing students in the sixth grade. She is definitely a leader too for our building. She is very calm, cool, and works it all the time. She doesn't let her peers get her ruffled, and she definitely is great at calming her peers down as well. And then our teacher of the month is Ms. Clarissa Wilson. Clarissa has been a part of this district for a long time. She is definitely a core through and through. She is a great leader. She is someone that her teachers... Oh, Aliyah's here. Come on up, Aliyah. This is Ms. Aliyah. She's a third grade student. We were just talking about how you're a very good leader for the sixth grade, how you are always calm, cool, and collected. You are. With your peers, and that you are one of our highest performers too. Did we just talk about that here today? She is. She's killing it in the classroom. She is overall a great student. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for being such a great student. Take care of your business. Congratulations. Thank you for being such a great student. Congratulations. Thank you for being such a great student. And it's like I said, Clarissa's just an overall, she's a great asset to the intermediate school. It's definitely come on her. Thank you. Next up, we have Newport High School.
I'm gonna start off like Miss White, but even more larger here. Our student of the month is Kate Lynn. Kate has been one of the brightest parts of Newport High School. He comes in every morning, he has a smile on his face. He was an honorary manager at one of our basketball games over this year. And the... The way that the boys and everything take it in and out are really... Am I right? And they're involved. And, you know, when you have someone like Dave who has overcome so much and does it on a daily basis, it's just great because no matter where you see him, cafeteria, the hallway, he always has a smile on his face. And he's just one of those things that when you look at him, he's just an encouragement to anyone with what he does. Lynn Gerst, our teacher of the month. Lynn was here for several years. She was here when I had her. She taught science with me for ten years. Then she moved to the E L, working with newcomers. And she's been doing a great job with that. And this year, we had to have a science teacher. And so, I looked at her and said, "If we step up, we need... We gotta have a science class." She did that, she does a great job with it. Anything you ask Lynn to do, she's always willing to step up and help. Unfortunately, Roland injured this year, and she's a little... A little bit closer to her family, that position up there. But she's totally heartbroken, and after all, we've been in this beautiful place.
We're going to take a ten minute break. We have some goodies out in the hallway, so we can congratulate our honorees down, so thank you. And we will resume our meeting in ten minutes, so it's six forty. So, we'll be back at six fifty, all right? Yes. All righty. Thanks for having me. I'm glad you had me. All right. Thank you. We're going to take a ten minute break. We have some goodies out in the hallway, so we can congratulate our honorees down, so thank you. And we will resume our meeting in ten minutes, so it's six forty. So, we'll be back at six fifty, all right? Yes. All righty. If there's no questions or any corrections to the minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
It's moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up is the treasurer's report, Ms. Hoover.
Good evening. You have the March bank reconciliation and the bank receipts for your approval. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions regarding the bank reconciliation statement? What about the invoices? Any questions or concerns regarding the invoices that are being presented for payment? Anybody need a minute to...
Please, we'll give this a second.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Thank you for... I did have one question on page six. I was gonna call you, and I didn't have a chance today.
Page six, so the invoices?
The, uh... What is it? Yeah.
Okay.
The one that's twenty-one pages.
Yes.
U S Bank. What is that for?
That is our bond payment.
Is it like a loan?
Right.
Okay. I just saw that big number. What is that?
Right, yes, unfortunately, that is a large numbers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're good. We're going to take a ten minute break. We have some goodies out in the hallway, so we can congratulate our honorees down, so thank you. And we will resume our meeting in ten minutes, so it's six forty. So, we'll be back at six fifty, all right? Yes. All righty. Are we ready to vote? We just need a few more minutes. Ready?
Yeah.
All righty, I need a motion to approve the bank reconciliation statement filed for audit and authorization to pay the invoices for March.
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Any questions regarding the other documents that Ms. Hoover has presented to us for information only? You can always, you know, reach out to her afterwards and ask questions. She's always available. She's very responsive and prompt via text or email or phone call. And we appreciate your service to the board. Thank you so much. All righty. Next is student learning and support services.
Great. I will start with a resignation. I'm sure all of you know about that, but Mike Hunter, our athletic director, is retiring after this school year. So, I'm asking you all to allow us to close the job as is, so we want to keep it a district position, just to give you an idea of one of some of the reasons. That athletic director position is a lot, and I know that, but I guess the year... Well, before I got here, and I think the first year or two, we had a person at the school that was doing the athletic director position as well. And we felt that if we made it a district position, we could get more done and get more things started in some of the other schools. So, Mike has done a good job of that, and again, I would like to continue that, just to give you an idea of some of the things that that position has to deal with. Making sure all coaches have the required training for the year, and they have monitored that through the K H S A A website for compliance. So, that's coaches' bare support, scheduling, the awards programs for all sports, and purchasing their awards, tracking the physicals for all the athletes, drug testing forms, spectator conduct forms, parent meetings for different sports. We could grade reports, and that's something that we started a couple of years ago. And at the end of the day, Mike would go around and round up the athletes who have failed, then the athlete who fell in class. And...
Regarding the minutes.
Thanks for being patient with me as I was virtual, but it worked out.
Yes, it did. It really did. Alrighty, if there's no questions or any corrections to the minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is the treasurer's report, Ms. Hoover.
Good evening, you have the March bank reconciliation and the bank receipts for your approval, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions regarding the bank reconciliation statement? What about the invoices? Any questions or concerns regarding the invoices that are being presented for payment? Anybody need a minute to?
Please, we'll give this a second.
Okay, go right ahead.
Ms. Hoover, I did have one question on page six, just gonna call you and I didn't have a chance today.
Page six, so the payables?
The, uh, what is it? Yeah. The one that's twenty-one pages.
Yes.
Uh, US Bank. What is that for?
That is our bond payment.
Is it like a loan? Okay. I just saw that big number, I'm like, what is that?
Right, yes, unfortunately that works in large numbers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
You're good? I really like this federal grant report, it is such an easy read.
Good.
Thank you for doing that. Alrighty, are we ready to vote? We just need a few more minutes. Ready?
Yeah.
Alrighty, I need a motion to approve, uh, the bank reconciliation statement filed for audit and authorization to pay the invoices for March.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, any questions regarding the other documents that Ms. Hoover has presented to us for information only? You can always, you know, reach out to her afterwards and ask questions, she's always available, uh, she's very responsive and prompt. Via text or email or phone call. And we appreciate your service to the board, thank you so much. Alrighty. Next is student learning and support services.
Alright, I will start with the resignation. Uh, I'm sure all of you know about that, Mike Hunter, our athletic director, is retiring after this school year. So I'm, uh, asking you all to allow us to close the job as is, so we wanna keep it a district position. Just to give you an idea of, um, one of some of the reasons. That athletic director position is a lot, and I know that, but I guess the year, well, before I got here, I think the first year or two, we had a person at the school that was, that was doing the athletic director position as well. And we felt that, um, if we made it a district position, we could get more done and get more things started in some other, some of the other schools. So Mike has done a good job of that, and again, I would like to continue that, just to give you an idea of some of the things that, uh, that position has to deal with, uh, making sure all coaches have to require trainers for the year, and they have to monitor that through the KHSAA website for compliance. So that's coaches' waivers for scheduling, the awards programs for all sports, and purchasing their awards. Uh, tracking the physicals for all the athletes, drug testing forms, spectator conduct forms, parent meetings for different sports, we could grade reports, and that's something that we started a couple of years ago. And at the end of the day, Mike would go around and round up the athletes who were failing. Then the athlete who fell in class has to go to study table before they go to practice. So the coaches have bought into that, and that's, that has helped us, um, with our athletes keeping their grades up. Coverage for all home sporting events and summer road games, depending on who we're playing, and that's basketball, volleyball, wrestling, and that's middle and high school, not just high school, so they're, you know, busy from the start of the school year to the end. Uh, track events also, baseball games, submitting and approving bus requests for the coaches, so that's part of their, uh, duties. And that's just a few, so I have a whole list of other things that they, uh, have to do. Another one is uniforms, ordering uniforms, inventory, so they do a lot. We feel that, um, by making it a district position, we give them that option of coming in a little later on days. You have a game that you know you're gonna be there until ten, eleven o'clock at night. Sometimes they may come in at nine or ten, uh, that morning, so they have that option. But if that's a teacher, you gotta get there at, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, and then staying there all night, those are, they'd be long nights. You know, and that's just for one night, you know, so when the boys and girls seasons are going, you may have four basketball games in one week. So, uh, we feel that it's, it would help us out and help that person if they can focus mainly on the athletic director position and not have to worry about doing lesson plans. So, uh, Mike was one that, he was at the end of his career, so, you know, he had twenty-eight years in, so of course his salary's gonna be a lot higher than somebody else, uh, who's just now coming in and starting off. So, uh, any questions on that?
Now, if I re- if I recall, the one reason that we separated the position, it was because, uh, a lot of the things were not being done effectively or timely, because the person was sharing, they were also a teacher.
Right, well, that, yeah, and that's a good point, you know, if you're, if you're trying to do lesson plans and everything else that comes along with teaching, something's gonna, you're gonna lose somewhere, so either you're not gonna be a good teacher, or you're not gonna be a good athletic director. I don't feel you can do both of those, um,
With the done.
efficiently and effectively. You know, by doing it as a district position, you know, that person is solely focused on the things they have to do for the athletics. You know, and it's, again, it's something I did say, they gotta set the gym up every night, you know, setting the football field up, making sure that everything's ready to go for every game. The tickets, money, so they're responsible for all of that. Concessions. Yeah, well, you just do another
What are you saying?
Title nine, title nine, they, they do title nines as well, so, you know, it's a lot.
So how did we do this before without a full-time, because be- before we, this is just the first year, he was just there for one year.
You too, yeah, this is the second year. Well, since I've been here, you know, COVID, and we didn't have, you know, so we didn't have a lot of events really going on during the COVID time, so it, you know, really didn't, uh, affect us as much, but speaking from when I was a principal, uh, we had a guy who was the in-school suspension teacher who did that, so if you're doing that position, you know, you really don't have any lesson plan, so, you know, you just really babysitting the kids while they're in, in-school suspension, so you can do some of the stuff, uh, that you need to be doing as far as athletic director. But if you're teaching a class, that, that makes it difficult.
And I can tell you, prior to this, when we didn't have an athletic director, our programs were not, um, where they are now.
Yeah, it does seem like our athle- uh, especially basketball is thriving, so.
You, you did start, I just saw this, 'cause I remember a email about it, and, uh, you started the basketball programs in elementary, but like, literally, like, first and second graders?
Yes. Yes, and that's one of the reasons the board put it, because we wanted our s- program to start at an earlier age. Um, and that was one, something Mike actually came to the board and recommended, uh, before he became, he was just a coach then. And as the coach, he was recommending that we expand our, uh, athletic, our sports program to the elementary, because to, so that the young people would be exposed to the, um, different programs at an earlier age, and he would be stronger and better if they started at the intermediate school, and I think he was even wanting to implement soccer, he tried.
They did, at the primary.
Okay. Okay.
They, they, you know, got some kids playing soccer, um, and again, just trying to get their interest in building those, uh, field programs. So once they get to the high school level, the kids have some kind of fun, you know, and it's not the first time that they're seeing it, so. You know, like I said, he, he's done a good job, um, implementing all of the things that he's, he's done so far, and we just wanna have those things continue.
Okay. Any more questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up, uh, just to put on your radar, uh, graduation, of course, is gonna be June the first, and, uh, the, uh, School of Innovation is gonna do a separate ceremony this year, so they will do a ceremony before the high school, so theirs will be at nine thirty, still will be at the high school, so you all, uh, you know, let me know if you plan to attend, vote. And then the high school graduation will begin at eleven thirty. And as we get closer, uh, we'll talk about, uh, more logistics, times we need to be there, uh, caps, gowns, and all of that fun stuff that comes along.
Alright.
The, well, a couple, a few weeks ago, I gave you all some updates on the educational bills that were on the table that might affect us. So the session ended a couple Mondays ago, so some of the things that passed, um, that will and could affect us. HB two, that was the one with that constitutional amendment to allow funds to be appropriated for private education. So we need to do a good job of, um, making sure people understand what that amendment means when it comes to the grounds pattern of voting. So we will be putting some things out, you know, all superintendent talk, and we have to make sure people know that if this passes, that means public funds get to go to private charter schools, and we don't want that. And if that happens, taxes have to go up, because where else are you gonna get money? They're gonna not gonna make any more money, the government, uh, the, uh, state's not gonna give them funding for that, so it has to come from somewhere. So if they're taking parts of our money, sending it to the private charter schools, that's one that we're losing, so we're gonna have to get money from somewhere, so we're gonna have to make sure that people understand that as we get closer. Uh, and ninety percent of all students go to public schools, yet they're still trying to push, you know, this private school and charter school. And I'm, I'm all for charter schools, if you wanna do that, get your own money, try to start one, don't try to take public funds to put into private schools. I don't, not with that, and I don't know many superintendents who is, as a board member, I don't think you all are. So definitely, we have to, uh, make sure we're doing a good job of, uh, getting that message out.
They're going to ballot in November.
Go ahead.
That's in November, right?
Gotta be in November, yeah, and, and you know how they word those things, so we're gonna have to make sure that we read it right, and sometimes you think you should vote yes, and you really should be voting no, so, uh, you, 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 we've seen those.
Yes, yes, yes.
You read it.
You had to read it ten times.
How should I vote on this? So we're gonna have to make sure people understand, and, you know, like I said, as we get closer, uh, we'll be putting some things out and make sure that people vote the right way on that. Uh, eight three six, that was the budget bill, that did pass, so they did give us, uh, some increases in seat money for the year one, and then increased it more year two, so we're right now trying to figure out what kind of raises we can, uh, do based on the raises that they gave, gave us. Uh, this is not gonna help us as much as some other districts, because of course our assessments went up, so when your assessments locally go up, then your seat dollars go down. So we, we're gonna do the best we can, and once we figure that out, we'll bring that to you all for approval on raises.
So, just, so the budget passed three percent increase in twenty twenty-five and six percent in twenty twenty-six, that's what?
Well, that was, again, that mean-
Did they alter, did they alter it, or?
Well, that may not, you know, again, we're gonna be different, so that's what they say across the board.
Okay.
It's not necessarily for us, for year and a six, so that's where we have to look at exactly how it affected us, because again, our assessments
Okay.
went up so much.
Alright, very good.
So even though they gave us that, that doesn't mean we're gonna get that.
Okay.
Because once we get down to what
So is it more like a up to three percent type of thing?
Well, that's again what they say.
Okay.
Well, it, it affects each district differently.
Right.
So I can't say right now that we will get
Okay.
the exact three percent, because again, it's based on our assessments.
Alrighty.
So the higher the assessments, the lower your seat money, and then vice versa, the lower your assessments, the more seat money you get. So some districts, uh, that'll affect them in a positive, and some, not so much. Uh, seven two seven is one that allows districts to issue general obligation bonds and obtain bank loans related to school construction projects. So, uh, that, you know, that's a, could be a positive. HB three thirty-seven establishes a pilot project for teacher-student loan forgiveness, so that could be a positive for teachers, uh, who have student loans. Uh, two sixty-five establishes a new teacher induction and mentoring program, so that's a positive. HB one sixty-two designed to improve math instruction, uh, they did the same thing for reading in twenty-two, so now we have one for math. So we gotta figure out how that comes.
And what, what was that, HB sixty-two?
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two. School safety bill, SB two, another one I mentioned to you. Uh, this gives the districts the opportunity to hire the position called a guardian. So that's for those districts who can't get SROs, so that won't affect us, and, and I don't know if I would really wanna do that, so they have a choice. Transportation bill, uh, HB four forty-six requires parents and guardians to be aware of and more responsible for school discipline rules. HB three eighty-seven establishes certifications for substitute teachers based on education and experience. HB four seventy-one prohibits students from being required to intro for classes in person if they are away from the district when their parent is on official military assignment. So I think those are the ones that, uh, I just wanted to mention to you, there were a lot passed, but I don't think the others, um, affect us as much. Um, and the last thing I have is Kim put some draft prescriptions on, on your desk for a PR, uh, position, and we just wanna take a look at that, uh, revisit it and see if there's something we wanna do, uh, right now. We're paying a part-time person here in the district, and we also pay Pat Crowley's office, so we wanna just look at that, see if it would be feasible for us to, uh, possibly hire somebody that's in-house, um, for that position instead of having the two halves. So that's something we can, uh, discuss later, and, you know, if you have any questions right now, we can talk about it a little bit, but that's something I wanna bring to your attention, and just for further future discussion.
Yeah, I, I definitely think it's, it's a need for the district, because we have so many wonderful things going in our, going on in our district, like we, our student board member here is just excelling in so many ways, and her story needs to be told, and, you know, and it's so many students who are doing great things in all our school, our staff, so I think there needs to be somebody in the district that owns our story. And, you know, can be that person that the, um, principal or teacher can reach out to and say, hey, you know, I wanna spotlight this student or spotlight this staff member, and I think that, you know, uh, last night, we were at the Excellence in Education, and Newport was, showed up, you know, we had six honorees, and it was just a, a wonderful night to have your chest out, you know, and those type of things need to be, you know, um, told in our community, you know, all the great things that happened, because, you know, it's just like a lie. You know, truth takes forever to get around the corner, but a lie, you know? So negative news travels fast, and the good news, you know, you may not hear about it until a week later, or never hear about it, if you hear about it. So I'm in agreement, and I think what we need to do is, you know, take a look, and I don't know if we need, you know, someone, I don't know if we need all three, and do we readjust, so it's just something to talk about and something for us to look at? Um, you know, do we still need, um, you know, Pat Crowley, uh, in the capacity that he is now, or do we change that, alter that, um? So.
Do a cost analysis and bring that to you the next time.
Yes. Very good, and, and so we have one here, the PR Communication Outreach Specialist. Um, and you said we already have one position in the district?
Yeah, that's the, uh, part-time one, and we had, that you all approved, uh, a couple of years ago, and I think, I'm trying to find it. That would be the, yeah, the Communication Outreach Specialist.
Okay, that's what I, I just wanted to clarify, is that what that was, and that's part-time, okay?
This other one was the one that they had, was that two thousand and four?
Yes. Yes.
And, and before, before we got this PR position approved, our social media was a hot mess, there was no real updates, there was spam on there, um, and now with the PR, uh, specialist that's at least doing part-time, is getting all kinds of stuff. He's getting the, this each school post, and then it's getting posted to the district page, it's getting shared in the community, so, I mean, he's doing a great job already, but if we had someone doing that full-time, it would be even better. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this, I have been since I've been on the board.
Right, and social media is just one part of the communication, and so I think that, you know, when we look at this, we need someone who has maybe some journalistic experience that can write, you know, stories and, you know, get articles out and things like that, um, because the social media is just one part of the communication, and, you know, many people are not, and so they're missing out on all the great things that we're doing, so, you know, even if they could do a, you know, a, a weekly news release, or, you know, uh, monthly or bimonthly, you know, just getting information out about, you know, like that newsletter you had at the high school, you know, I, what was it ca- what was that called?
I can't, I can't think of it.
Right, but it, I, I enjoyed getting that, um, newsletter, um, and we can send that via email, or, you know, send it home to the kids, you know, and maybe even, you know, send them to the new, you know, like some of our business partners, Newport Business Association, you know, there's just many ways to get what we're doing out to the community to change the narrative and control it, so. I'm, I'm, thank you, this is a great idea and recommendation, and I'm sure we'll unpack it and come up with what's best for the district. And Abigail, if you have any input, we welcome it. I saw you shaking your head over this, I think you're in agreement with getting the me- message out, so, very good. Alrighty.
Alright, next up, we have the curriculum department.
I'm Jack, good evening, board members, Superintendent Watts. We shared our report, I did wanna highlight, um, the night of the classroom where we took six teachers to a professional development dinner with Ron Clark, and, uh, we had a good time, he talked about his engagement strategies and his start of the school and what he thinks and does in his school, and at the end of that event, three of our teachers won a scholarship. And Jamie, who's a Teacher of the Month here for- three of our teachers won a scholarship, and Jamie, who's a Teacher of the Month here for the primary, was actually one of those teachers. So it's an all-expense-paid trip for them to go to Ron Clark Academy in, um, Atlanta and learn from him, and when they come back, they'll be in our classrooms for student engagement here in the floor. So those are the scores we wanna get out and share with you.
Wonderful. Yes, that is definitely, definitely, um, and, you know, we, years ago, we brought him here. Ron Clark was here opening day and lit a fire in so many of our teachers, but a lot of those teachers have, and you know, when leadership change, you know, um, when it's not part of the system, that energy, that process goes with that person, so unless it's embedded in the district as part of the system, and what you're doing is making it a model classroom, that's something we own.
And hopefully it helps with teacher retention.
Yes.
When I was working in Covington, uh, with Mr. Remains, I was one of their first Ron Clark teachers, and to this day, you go to Holmes Middle School and the House of Payne is painted on the walls in my little classroom. So that's retention, I didn't wanna leave that classroom, I only left it to be moved up, but otherwise, that would've been my classroom.
Yes, yes, well, good, good, 'cause I'm glad to hear that, um, he's done a lot of good work in his program, students that come out of the Ron Clark Academy are very successful, um, and so, yes, thank you.
And also, uh, we did, we worked, uh, a portion of graduate work, the last time I talked to you all about that, we were talking about getting our teacher leaders involved, and we met this week with the co-op in the University of Kentucky to, um, start on completing that work, and they worked on the assessment piece. So in that PowerPoint that I attached to our board report, if you go down where it says work sessions, you'll see the work that they did, uh, we completed the communication, um, domain, uh, as part, and they'll continue to meet again, and we'll complete the rest of those, when we have that finished product, we can bring it to the board for approval. And speaking of systems work, uh, I always call Dr. Brown, Ms. Brown, is, is working on putting some systems together, that's included in our report, where she sent out an invitation to staff members to come together so we can create a manual for the district, so we can put those systems in writing, so the work that we're doing and establishing now will continue.
Great, great, so it won't leave with the people that's doing it. Very good, very good.
Are there any questions, uh, report, yes, sir?
On, on the preschool PLC that, um, what, eh, I, I see that you guys are doing, uh, of, of, this is the beginning of a meeting to set a vision, establish root cause for low student achievement and plan for improvement. So what, what exactly is, uh, you know, what's the, can you, can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, we met myself and, um, Director of Special Ed, some of her staff, we met with all the teachers and all the IAs that were there, and we really looked at the data, what we had there. I did a needs assessment with them by asking them some questions to find out what they felt they did well, and what they felt they needed support in. Some of those things were professional development, some of those things were support with class size, with help with students with, uh, special needs. So we took some of those things, we're gonna go back and work on those, and we're gonna continue the PLC, the PLC work now and throughout the summer will be improving every month in our program. So that was a point of that meeting, just to say, hey, let's look at our data, let's establish what you need to improve, how we can, what we can do from district support to help to improve, and then an implementation plan, same thing we did with K through twelve, now we're going with preschool.
Great, great, yeah, those kindergarten readiness, uh, uh, the kindergarten readiness data is, is sort of concerning, or at least the, you know, the, the one that came out recently was concerning.
And the impact that will have on that, I mean, the students that we have here, we're still working on, 'cause those sto- scores are combined with students that we don't have here.
Right, yeah, they go to all kinds of different preschools.
So we're gonna work on the ones we have there in our program, and then try to extend the hand externally to some of our partners to see what we can do to reach those kids for kindergarten readiness. That meeting was primarily about the kids we have here.
Gotcha, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
It's a good report.
Thank you.
Alright, keep up the good work.
Next up, DPP.
Madam Chair, members of the board, do you have a copy of the DPP report for the month of April? This is the shortest report that I have ever given to you.
Yes, I think it's in the hist- in the history of the DPP position.
Yes, and, uh, I apologize in advance for next month and June, so maybe the exceptional April. Do you have any questions for me? I do wanna point out, just real quick, the one thousand four hundred and sixty-three students, that's the highest in the year that we had in Newport, post-pandemic, during the pandemic or afterwards.
You think that we'll see these trends, uh, continue for kindergarten, first, second, first and second grade, you think that those will?
I do.
Go into the third, you think these kids are gonna stay with us, or you think?
I, I think our numbers will continue to be high, um, since House Bill five sixty-three, the primary school has been the most impacted. Now, we're only looking at two or three years where the data there, there's nothing else really to triangulate that to. Um, when I look at our child count data, that comes back from the county, so when I look at Campbell County as a whole, we're looking at several normal school districts that, um, you know, just trying to figure out how many four-year-olds are currently in the county, how many children are born this year, what's the impact gonna be for five and six years down the road? Um, as of right now, I, I would expect the primary school to continue having that many. We have, uh, several have already reached out, have already completed applications for next year and are waiting to see if they'll be accepted. We have to wait first and enroll all the Newport resident students, and then, uh, take a look at that. But like I said, the primary school has been the most impacted with non-residency.
Yeah, well, I, I, I know that we have, um, concerns about the, uh, classroom sizes at the intermediate school, and, you know, right now, the third grade and the fourth grade only have eighty-four and ninety-three students, uh, in that, and then the, these kindergarten, first, second, third, uh, first and second grade classes are significantly larger, so we might have to do some accommodations for the intermediate school.
And, and that's something we're looking at, is the number of second graders going into third grade, looking at the class sizes, how much space is for teachers, um, as compared to students, furniture, all of, all of those pieces, but we will not start with that many third graders, we, we simply don't, when we look at non-residency, and that's something that's shared with parents as well, you know, we will try, but once all classrooms are full, that's, that's gonna be what we'll have.
Gotcha, so do we know what the capacity is for the, for the third grade?
We're figuring right now on thirty per, so it's gonna be between twenty-eight and thirty students physical spacing. Um, and then we have, of course, uh, your class max number, or your, the amount you're allowed to have in the classroom, ours is, is decreased simply because of the size of the rooms. So I said a lot to not really answer your question, because, um, the principal and the advisory council determine which rooms are gonna be classrooms, and how many classrooms, and what those spaces are gonna be used for. And so if we have a bigger room, that comes down to the principal making the determination that that's gonna be used for that purpose.
Gotcha.
If I recall, didn't we, didn't the intermediate school and, and come to us for additional staff because of the anticipated growth?
Yes.
Okay, so we already voted.
Well, that was just a continuation, I thought, of, uh, because they were S R positions.
It is a continuation, those were S R positions, the request when the principal made it, I believe it was last month, one of their concerns was their interventions, and again, I would have to maybe kick that out to Ms. Payne, um, as she assists with the instructional side, but it was my understanding that they needed to be able to continue the support of seeing through interventions as well. And it was specifically for, uh, I believe, fourth grade, they were concerned about from third grade going into fourth, and that may have been a fifth grade position as well. So not specifically for third grade.
Yeah, but it was because of the growth.
We're looking at all of those things at once, when we come in May, I can tell you down to the, the exact number of kid, you know, per classroom space.
Well, we just hate to see a student that's been with us kindergarten through second grade, and then suddenly they go into third grade and they're not allowed to come back, you know, that's, that's tough.
Right, we take those sorts of things into consideration.
Okay, good, and if there's anything we can do, you know, come to us.
Right now, we, they're, they're just getting a lot of data, so they're looking at their Title I allocations, they've already received their SPM allocations. Um, I know Ms. Hooper's been communicating with us about what budgets look like for next year, this is just another piece to that, are the principals going through and saying, this is what we have space for, this is what we have room for, we have to define what our capacity is before the school year starts, that way I know who we can bring in. Uh, we do have a lot of kids, and, and one of the, the factors for, um, K one and two having so many students are the number of people working within Newport, that it's easier for them to bring their, their child to Newport independent, because they start at eight o'clock, maybe they get off work at three or four or five, they're in the same city as their child, so we do look at those requests specifically.
Good, and looking at the various numbers, do we ever look at, okay, we have this many in the primary moving to intermediate? I mean, is it a positive number, a negative number, or?
Yes. So when, um, the site-based decision-making council allocations come out from the superintendent, they use a roll-forward method to figure out how many teachers each school has to have, 'cause your, your SPM allocation is your base, and again, that's Ms. Payne, so if, if I say anything incorrectly, please correct me. It's been a couple of years, um, so that's your base application, and, uh, that's not something you ever want to inflate, so we use that roll-forward method. And I've seen that up several times through here, um, I'll usually start about November looking for it, because we start planning for the next year in November. So those are all pieces that they're looking at, yes.
Very good.
One thing, I, I do wanna just point out real quick, on this enrollment versus grade, this is enrollment versus grade level, not enrollment versus school. So let's say, for example, um, if I'm looking at grade twelve, there's ninety-nine students, seventeen of those are at NSOI. So I've given you below their how many are in each school as well, if you'd ever prefer to have this differently, just let me know. And I'm, for, uh, Newport Regional, they are running sixth grade to twelfth grade, um, School of Innovation is running sixth grade to twelfth grade as well.
Thank you. Um, and s- speaking of, uh, the School of Innovation, can you include, um, an update in, uh, in June?
Yeah, I will.
I try not to put too much on the agenda, because it's in the school, I saw you look like, okay.
Next time, couldn't you give us a breakdown, just of, uh, of those other, you know, those other, I don't know if you can change the, rather than red, put it in a different color or something?
No, actually, it's okay, people, I'll just read the report, and I'll go ahead and give you one to nine, and then next month on the official report, I'll have it broken out separately, that way you can also see the demographic data.
Cool, be great, thanks.
Next up, you have. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening, I have a paper copy of my energy report, normally this is electronic, but the Duke Energy Billing Portal was down last week, but it was back up today, and I was able to finish this for you.
Okay, great.
Uh, Mr. Davis, this is, each month I do kind of a, an analysis of where we were last year with our natural gas and the, uh, electricity. So far, we're off to a, uh, well, we've done well for the year, and plus, we've also, um, purchased our natural gas from a third-party supplier for a couple of our buildings, and I know we're probably at about ten thousand dollar savings just alone with that right now, so, uh, that's a plus.
Great.
Another, uh, significant increase for us is just the fact that at the stadium, there used to be natural gas underneath the bleachers that heated that space to keep plumbing from freezing every year. So since we don't have to worry about that, we've probably saved over seven thousand dollars just in natural gas at the stadium, so, uh, but this is just a, a report that I do each month, so that you can see kind of where we are. But it's not an exact science to what I do, but it's in the ballpark in terms of how I calculate these numbers. This evening during New Business, I am, uh, requesting your approval for us to, uh, purchase a product through Navigate. Uh, currently, Navigate is our emergency response management system, this is how we, uh, notify, uh, staff and central office and so forth, any kind of emergency situation, lockdowns, fire drills, fire alarms, uh, bomb threats, on and on and on. A few months ago, I was, uh, I, I stumbled upon another product that Navigate has, and it's basically their threat assessment program. So, um, this might be informative to, to all of you in terms of what we have to do when a threat is presented to us. So in today's society, it doesn't matter how big, how small the threat may seem, there is a very specific protocol that we have to follow. Even if a kindergarten student were to say, I'm gonna shoot you up, and this is real, we have to, there is no way for us to just dismiss that.
Right.
We have to take that very seriously, uh, and through societal changes and things that have happened, uh, over the past few years, uh, there are, um, procedures and, uh, recommendations out there that we need to follow, and that is taking every situation through a threat assessment. At each of our buildings, we have a threat assessment team, uh, that, that principal, um, builds each year, and anytime we have that scenario, a third grader says, I'm gonna blow it up, we have to conduct a threat assessment. So with this process, we have been doing a paper pencil version of this for, for the past few years. Uh, these types of situations have definitely escalated since COVID, uh, I think the whole world understands that mental health is a, uh, an ongoing issue and continues to need support and tools, uh, to, to help us out, uh, but in particular, since COVID, this, these types of things have increased. So again, as I mentioned, it's more of a paper pencil process right now, what Navigate will do for us is it will, uh, build all of this into an online format, so that it is very specific with all of the different questions that we have to ask about a scenario. Uh, it will eliminate human error in the fact that it requires you to answer questions, uh, in terms of, does the child have access to a weapon? Is, has the child, um, uh, shown intent before and so forth, it's very detailed and very methodical. Uh, at the end of this, it will give us a range of threat, no product will ever say that, yes, Sylvia is a threat, okay? You'll just say, Sylvia may be a moderate threat. So.
We've known that from here.
Basically, as well, this keeps, this serves as a clearinghouse, um, and it allows for, uh, the system to transfer these different threat assessments from school to school. For example, if Ms. Michael is here, uh, she can tell you that, you know, she may have a sixth grader that we've filed three or four threat assessments on this year. And if, you know, through either human error or whatever, those paper files didn't make it to the high school, and the student is a seventh grader, they may not have, they, they may not know that we've already done four threat assessments on this one student, where this new system will, um, keep it consistent so that they will stay, uh, there, and the high school staff would be able to see that, yes, last year four threat assessments were done. Uh, right now, the cost for for the first year is about five thousand something dollars, uh, this will be paid out of the state grant through our, um, Safe Schools Funds, uh, so it's nothing but general funds. Uh, after the first. Uh, after the first year, uh, it'll drop to three thousand and something because we will need that continued training. Uh, Brandon has looked early at the contract, we've had some questions and sent it back to them and they were able to come back and, uh, uh, meet his needs with some, some language and, uh, with it. So, uh, any questions about this?
How many people are trained to utilize this?
Well, this will be our, all of our counseling staff, all of our principals, um, all of our assistant principals. Uh, there will probably be, uh, some mental health therapists that might be involved in this as well. Uh, another, uh, I'll, another important feature of this is that because it is electronic, anytime a threat assessment is initiated, you know, again, third grader says, I'm gonna blow the school. Uh, as soon as that is initiated, myself and the steward, we will get a notification so that we know to be there, to be there, inquire about the level of severity, the details and so forth, or to be there for support in general. Uh, typically, the schools will, will call me or the steward, uh, as it is now. To let me know, hey, I've got this that's happened, um, you know, if you wanna come over and be a part of this, whatever, we will. Uh, but this is being just a little more automatic. Uh, so there will be, so to answer, better to answer your question, there's probably gonna be twenty people involved in this at least.
So let's say a teacher has a student that says that, how, what's the process for that?
Well, typically, it would be just an immediate notification to administration.
Okay.
That a, a threat like that has been made. Cause then, um, you know, we want that to be passed on to administration because we have the time and the resources to quickly and efficiently investigate something where a teacher's got twenty-five other kids in front of him. You know, so it, it, it passes it over to us, we get the counselors. You pull your threat assessment team together is what you're doing. And then, uh, there's a whole series of questions and a whole process that we have to follow. And if, uh, if any of the principals were, were here, they would tell you, it's time-consuming. And it's becoming more and more frequent. So anything that we can do to streamline the process, make it more efficient and more effective at the same time, then I wanna try to help them out, so.
Uh, speaking of all the craze that goes on with, uh, transportation of lessons, what part of this program would protect the safety of the bus driver and kid if that threat was, if it blew a bush out?
Well, you're, you're right, the same thing applies to that. So if something were to occur on the bus, then I would team up with, uh, the, whatever school the, the child is from. And if there was, if something took place on a bus, then we'd be pulling that school's threat assessment team together and we would go through the same process.
You said five thousand dollars?
Yes.
For the, is the initial cost?
Yes.
And then after that, the next year is three thousand dollars?
Yeah, so if you want, if you did the math there, I should have prepared the math. It's minus the training. So the dollar amount on the training is, um, seven twenty and there's an implementation fee that would be gone.
Okay.
So seven twenty minus, and then minus the six fifty, so it brings it down to three thousand and something.
So is this the annual fee that will be paying?
Yes.
So it's three thousand dollars a year as long as we use the system?
Yes.
Okay, that's what, that was my question.
Is there any connectivity with, uh, police departments or, um, other districts? I know we have a lot of.
Yes, uh, actually, Covington Independent, uh, has been using this for four years. So before when I said, uh, you know, I stumbled upon the reality is I was actually talking to my wife about how they do their threat assessments. She's the assistant principal over in Covington. And she said, well, we do it through Navigate. So what do you mean Navigate? How does Navigate do it? So she showed me how they do it. And, uh, from there, we set up, uh, the, uh, the Zoom meeting with their sales, um, uh, several of our staff members here.
Collaboration, partnership, fun.
And we're really impressed with the product. So, uh, we, Covington's been using it for years. I talked to Janice Wilpersen, uh, over in Covington and, and, and she sold on it.
So if, if we had a student that came from Covington to Newport, would we, would that data be available?
I don't know.
Might be a proper rule.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if that would transfer from district to district.
Yeah, that might be a proper rule.
We can ask.
We can, yeah, we can ask, but, uh, I don't know that one.
Okay. Let's say you used it for a couple of years and decide to not use it anymore. Do you still have access to the data that you had accrued up to that point, or does it, you just can't get in anymore?
Uh, I would say if we knew that we were going to exit, we would need to do some sort of, some sort of a purge.
Okay.
So, and, and if we left the data there knowing that we were leaving the shame on us, we should have purged it somehow. So, um, but it makes, again, I, I think it would be an effective tool for us to get that immediate notification and be very thorough, take out human error and, uh, provide consistency.
I was gonna say, that was the word, I was gonna say Dennis, it, 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 the consistency, I think is way important. That each threat is, 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 is excess in the same way.
Right, and not that I would think that any of our staff would do a half answer approach to this, but at the same time, it requires you to answer the questions to be able to move on.
Yes, yeah.
So in reality, or I guess in theory, uh, you know, on the paper pencil version, if someone, if a team chose they didn't wanna answer a question, they could choose not to answer a question.
And, and in all reality, our staff is not really trained in, you know, to do threat assessment. You know what I mean? They're, they're educators. And the, the, there, there, there's some level of training, but it's not what you do as your profession.
Right, the people that we have on the threat assessment teams are, are, are people that are learning more and more
Yes.
uh, of, of just how things are, how the world is.
Right.
How children think and, and so forth. So, uh, we, we've built strong teams. And again, no product is going to immediately deem, yes, this child is a threat. No, no one's gonna accept the responsibility and liability to do that. Or opposite say, no, Sylvia's not a threat, but then Sylvia goes off and does something crazy, okay? So, uh, no company's gonna do that. But what the, the team approach is designed to do is you've got this collective group of people that are gonna make the best informed decision that they can using a tool such as this to be able to say, okay, we've got some next steps we need to take.
Very good, thank you.
I think it's good that it goes from primaries to intermediate.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And it follows along. So it eliminates any possible, um, uh, I guess, loss of paperwork. And, cause I, I feel that myself is a, a, a significant liability if a file folder doesn't make it from one building to another. And as a seventh grader, the child does something, then we're in the jackpot.
Right.
So.
Does this belong to your school safety program?
Yes, so this would, uh, this is all part of the, the Safe Schools Coordinator's role and the law and the steward and the DPP, uh, position. And then again, this would be coming out of our Safe Schools funding.
Okay.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right, if you have a copy of my report, do you have any questions with anything that's on that?
I don't have an idea, man. Good report, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else special, Ed?
And Chair members of the board, you had my report on April. Do you have any questions regarding the information that we gave?
That first pull-up point is that the documents being distributed, how are we distributing that?
Um, handover them to students.
Okay, I didn't know, maybe we're emailing it also, or?
No.
Okay.
It's also on our, kind of website, on our special populations website.
Do you have any questions? Any questions, comments?
No, great report, as usual.
Yes, as usual.
Thank you.
All righty. I think that's it for student services. Old business, there is nothing, now on to the new business. Uh, let's see. Personnel report is, uh, any questions regarding that? Uh, let's see, higher emergency certified student teacher, certified substitute teacher for twenty. So this is the permanent supposition?
No. They, they just give us permission to hire subs.
Okay. So this is just as needed?
Well, we have a surplus. And all these students are running for certified, so we have to do a pretty much.
Okay. And this surplus books list?
I didn't have time to review that, three hundred pages.
Right, I mean. Is, does this need to, I mean, I don't want to prove something that we didn't really have a chance to discuss or talk about. Especially in light of that bill that we got. The bill that passed about certain curriculum and books.
Is that my payment book?
Yeah, I, I mean, we got that long list and I'm, I'm a, um, it was, is it, is it still on here, am I missing it?
It's, it's on an email.
Right, it was in the email, right?
Yeah, it was on the email, yeah.
And there was like five hundred books on there.
I just know it was, I was gonna print it and then I thought, no.
Yeah, once I saw how many, so, um, can we pencil, I mean, is there a deadline or something that needs to be done right away?
No, I think it's just trying to get, get books out of the library.
Okay, and I understand that, but if the board needs to approve it, you know, we need to, uh, be able to look at the books and get answered questions as to why these books are being removed.
Where does books go when we need?
I don't, I don't, right.
They give you the book, haven't they?
They, they, I think they donate them or I don't know if they auction them off or?
I saw something about they'll have them, like, when they do free books or.
Okay.
Book day, they said they would have them out there for that. That, I did see that in that three hundred something pages.
Okay. Well, if you all are comfortable taking action.
No.
No? Okay.
I'm not, I wanna look at it.
Yeah, so can we pencil this, Mr. Watts?
Yes.
And then can you have, uh, maybe the, uh, media specialists come and talk to us about the process and how they determined to surplus these books? Was it based on age, was it based on material, was it based on wear and tear? You know, we just need some context on how they got these book to that pla- place of where into surplus. You know, and is it from, okay, and this all at the high school, correct? These are all just from the high school?
Yes.
All right, very good. So. All righty. Next is the IRB. Uh, let's see. Can I believe the? Any more discussion, Mr. Frome came to the board, um, was it, our last meeting?
Yeah.
And explain us any questions, any concerns?
A few comments. Uh, I did talk to Mr. Frome, um, originally under, on page two. Uh, line out of B, it stated that we would, uh, receive a payment of due taxes in the amount not less than twenty thousand dollars. But that wasn't, um, wasn't truly accurate, so we haven't, or I asked him, you know, what's the story? He changed it, uh, to four dollars per thousand, which is what, what he discussed last week in the meeting. The other thing I found out, um, I think he may, he may have mentioned this, I was virtual, so it's not, I caught about eighty percent of it. Um, the lots right now are not being taxed because they're, they're held by a nonprofit. So we're not getting any money from this, uh, right now at all. I don't think this project will go forward unless, uh, we agree with the IRBs. Um, I know that Ramona had, Jennifer Ellen, look, you talked about.
Yes. Um, the flat rate that the city is proposing is four dollars per thousand dollars, which equals, um, I guess, based on the amount of homes, roughly twenty thousand dollars a year because estimated, maybe ten homes will be built.
I think it was eleven.
Eleven, so it'd be a little bit more than that, maybe twenty-two thousand.
Turn out to be.
Because it'd be two thousand dollars per house. Correct? Based on the estimated value.
Yeah.
But at the current tax rate, um, this forty-eight thousand two hundred, Jennifer, you wanna explain that?
Um, I, so that's the amount that we give if they were, um, if our tax rate was applied. So taking the five million that is estimated for the project.
Okay.
Applying our tax rate to that, then it would be the forty thousand, um.
The forty-eight thousand two hundred?
Yes.
And that's assuming that the houses would get built without us giving them a tax.
I mean, that's just assuming that it, we're just going to the straight five million dollars that Mr. Frome said was the estimated value of the project. So that's just the five million.
But that would affect our SEAC money, correct?
Pardon me?
If we did that, if we didn't do the IRB, it would affect our SEAC money?
Yes.
It, it would, it would result in a, a mild decrease in SEAC if we didn't, if we didn't, uh, do the IRB.
No, yeah, the, the IRB wouldn't affect the SEAC money, but if you got the value of the property added to what we already have, that would affect the SEAC.
So did you do a calculation based on that at all? Like, we would get forty-eight thousand, but we would lose?
I mean, I can, but there's so many other factors. It would, I would need to give you a number, cause with, it would.
Just an estimate?
It, it's, but no, I did not, um, I just.
I could, I could tell you what I've seen in ones that do type the SEAC. Generally, it's about forty to forty-five percent, that's about the story.
Forty to forty-five percent what?
The, the, your SEAC, like, like if, the, the impact to SEAC gets about, I mean, forty percent. So it, it would like, a lot of districts that use the percentage, you know, like, say, if it's a hundred dollar owed, IRB gets fifty-five and forty-five, you know, they use those numbers. About forty percent is generally what you see districts doing. So if you were to take forty-eight thousand times forty, forty-five percent, roughly about half, that, that's about generally what your SEAC's gonna be impacted by.
Gotcha.
There's no, as she says, no bright iron rule, that's just what? Districts do, I've seen IRBs, that's the number they use. Like the one that Campbell just did was like forty-five, fifty-five or sixty-five, thirty, it was a random number.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Yeah, so, these IRBs, these IRBs are incentive to develop undeveloped, uh, not undeveloped, but.
Yeah, that's what Mr. Frome explained to us.
An incentive to develop things that may not necessarily be developable, that, that someone might not want to necessarily develop. So, you know, this being a nonprofit, um, usually when we grant these IRBs and these pilot payments, they're going to for-profit corporations. And just like this project that we approved, uh, last year for, um, up on Weedenman Hill. I believe it was a ten million dollar project, it was private developers, we agreed to an IRB for that. But the, the proceeds from that sale would go to the developers. Whereas this scenario, um, this is a nonprofit, so they're not gonna make money off of this.
And like Mr. Frome said last week, there would be a benefit to the community for the west side, uh, if there is a local historic district. Uh, money that the city gets would be used for facade grant to improve buildings for residency and people. So it does have a public benefit to it.
Okay. Alrighty, any more questions? Alright, let's move on to the next agenda item. Uh, let's see, now the tuition reimbursement agreements, options. These, I mean, I think the most, um. I guess, let's just say fiduciary, um, when you wanna be, um, conservative with the funds. Did I say that right? I, I, I think having a ceiling is, um, I like the idea, but, you know, when I think about the letters program, you know, and which Ms. Payne is focused on reading. And can you, is focused on reading science or?
Science of reading.
The science of reading.
Teaching teachers how to really teach reading.
Okay. Now, I, I talked to Mr. Sutherland about this, now this, to me, needs to be the priority. And a part of me wants to remove all the other options and open up the space for the science of reading for the first year, because it is such a need in our district. Getting our kids reading on great level is our biggest challenge. And so.
My question is, we've had some tuition reimbursement previously, right? How has that benefited us as of this point?
Um.
Retention was a big, a big reason why we did it, was we were having, and, uh, not knowing retention, but recruitment. Um, Mr. Watts went to a couple of universities and that was one of the sounding points on coming to Newport. So I think that did work, we, we, we pretty much were fully staffed, except for maybe a science teacher or something.
It, it has helped as far as retention, because again, you know, once they get that, they have to give us five years, so that has helped.
Right.
You know, of course you're gonna have outliers.
Yeah.
Get fired on purpose, you know, that we had in the past, they have to pay it back, but we're gonna remove that clause. So it's, I think it's, uh, it's a benefit.
Yeah.
Most, most of our non-pay were the, uh, the retention, you know, the, the ARBA money. I mean, that's majority of what we, the non-pay was, for the most part, it's not tuition, it hasn't been.
It's not tuition.
It's mostly been the retention.
Yes.
It was all the federal money that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And just to piggyback what Erin said, you know, when we use this incentive, there were districts that were, had such a, several positions they could not fill, and we were one of the few districts that did not have that problem because of the incentives that we offer our teachers. And that's, as we said, that, it was mainly just for retention, but also the benefit is, you know, our teachers, um, are being developed while they're here. You know, they're growing and developing in addition to the PD that we offer, you know, we're offering them an opportunity to get a rank change. You know, which puts them in a higher salary bracket, because, you know, normally, you know, you have to work so many years to get, you know, those rank changes. And this, this is an opportunity for them to get it sooner, and that's another incentive for them to stay with us. So, um, I guess our decision is to, um, choose which one we feel would be most impactful, to the district and also be more cost-effective. So, Mr. Watts, you know, based on your conversation with your staff and your team, what is your recommendation as far as the, uh, budget?
Well, my recommendation will probably be, be either thirty-six, three, or the forty-eight, four. Thirty-six, three would be, um, you know, again, we could go fully funded six, or partially funded twelve, or with the forty-eight, fully funded eight, partially funded sixteen. Darla, how many people are we, uh, looking at possibly with letters?
There's five in the program now, I mean, we could add ten more.
How much does it cost? What's the cost for that?
Five thousand dollars, five, fifty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred per person.
If you add ten more, that's fifty thousand dollars, isn't it?
So that would be, um, you know, that would take the whole forty-eight for the first year.
Right.
And then the next group would have to wait till the second year.
Is there any retention component to them doing the letters thing?
Yes, we have, still.
I mean, they gotta stay a certain amount, okay.
So, if we did the partial, how many teachers you think would pay the other half to participate?
That's a good question.
Darla, do you know?
And that, that would be tough.
Yeah.
Because again, it's putting an added, uh.
Yes, the added vine is, yes, costs them, so.
So that may be a reason not to do it.
It's, it's a cheap rank change. I mean, if you're only paying twenty-five hundred dollars for a rank change, that's a bargain.
Okay. And we didn't look, that's why we're asking, because you all have an insight we don't have.
Your base salary probably pays for it very much to your.
Say, say to me.
Teachers pay up to eighteen thousand for this university, no change.
Okay, so, in, the program Darla's proposed would, would do that?
Rank changes.
Rank changes.
I mean, you had some teachers that, that first year it was up to like eighteen thousand, and like went to like Xavier. And nothing in Xavier, but obviously their tuition was significantly higher. So there was no criteria on if you went to private school or public school. So, you know, at least if you do, it's more of a fixed tuition. Versus, you know, so, because we did, we had something around with that eighteen thousand, year one.
Yeah.
Would it be possible for us to wait on this decision until I can run salary numbers and see what kind of increase we might be able to give? And get everybody's budget plugged in for the tentative budget? I'm just really hesitant on such a large number, I don't wanna.
A reasonable, is it possible, what's the number?
When you say.
You could, or.
Excuse me, when you say large number, which number, the thirty-six thousand a year?
Yes. I just, yeah, I, I'm just really hesitant to, I mean, i- if you want the highest directors, um, staff or approval, I'm really hesitant on that amount. I mean, budget is gonna be tight, and I think we all agree that we need to, you know, put money into the salary schedule. Because if the salary schedule isn't where it needs to be, the tuition reimbursement doesn't matter. So we've got districts that are doing five and six percent increases, and that's a lot. We've got districts that we've never been below, now we are, so. I would like to wait on making the decision until, or if you let me know which one you're leaning towards, I can kinda plug it in and see where we fall.
Well, okay, the, I, I'm, 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 Mr. Watts, is there any rush on this?
No, there's no rush, we just wanna have it before, uh, before the year starts, so we can.
Okay, great, I'm, I'm okay with pending that and having more discussion about it. Um, so.
The tentative budget will be due next month, so it won't be a long, like, just the next quarter, it will be my request.
Very. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
The one thing you could look at too, is when they did that rank change, they, their salary goes up.
Yes.
So we could maybe, can we look at a component that even if they, where the pay, whereas we loaded the education, so maybe they got a three thousand dollar a year pay increase, that maybe over two years, we would, you know, you agree, your pay would be a little less to repay the district. So they'd still be getting an increase in their rank, but basically we become the bank. Because the minute they get that, so if I do it right now and get my rank change, I'm gonna do it, you know, you're from a different brand, I don't know what your salary is today, but there's all, you can pay more.
Yes.
With that, so you can almost use that increase potentially to help finance it, you know, make it a win-win for both without, yes, you, you'd be the bank, you just put some money out, but at least you're not just out the money at that point, you do recruit some.
Could that be a way to keep the program going, to fund it?
It might give you more volume and power. And it lets, I mean, obviously you wouldn't wanna do it to where they get no increase, because it kinda would be, you know, would they still wanna do it? But if all of a sudden I'm gonna get three thousand a year, and I'm just making around numbers, I gotta give you a thousand, but still I had two grand, plus my normal salary increase.
About a bad idea?
Yeah.
Alrighty. So, um, do we add, I mean, I say we go ahead and add six, because we definitely want, um, the letters program as an option. Yeah. Because, uh, the science of reading, um, I think is crucial in our district, and I think it's more of a need in our district. And we got teachers that want to become better at teaching our kids to read, um.
But that would fall under whatever maximum amount.
Yes, it would, it, we're just adding the program, we're not making decisions on, um.
The amount yet.
The amount yet.
So, Je- Jennifer, at this point, could someone who's a teacher in Newport, sign up and do one of these things right now, at this, at this juncture?
Any of our, I mean, yes, unless you all wanna vote tonight to put a pause on the program completely until you all make a decision on how we're moving forward. But yes, as of right now, anybody, somebody could call tomorrow and say, hey, I wanna do it, fill out an agreement. Unless that's a motion you all would like to make about just putting a pause on it right now, until next meeting.
This doesn't affect those already in it does?
No, we would continue everyone currently in the, those people already in the budget are the accounted for. So anybody currently with a signed agreement is not a thoughtfully.
Okay.
Let me consider, this is the end of the year, it might be good to put the pause.
I, I'm, listen, I'm getting ready as for the motion.
So, so do you just wanna remove five and six and add what I just said, what you just said?
Mm-hmm. We're gonna, we will, um, first thing we'll do is make a motion, anything that we're not prepared to vote on, we make a motion to remove it from the consent agenda, that's the first motion. And then we actually go ahead and vote on the things that we want to, once we go through the entire list. So we have, the next thing is the, so the letters, do we want to just hold off on adding that for now?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, we have the, the MOU with NKU for option nine. Uh, and the MOU, uh, with NKU for the field and clinical education. And who can, uh, can you expound on that MOU for the field and clinical education?
That says the, uh, uh, student teacher.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's what that is, that.
I thought that's what, that's what we. Okay.
We're gonna allow the, uh, them to place teachers in our buildings, and we're gonna do what they ask us to do, they're gonna do their part.
Okay.
So that, that's what that is, and that, another change on that one, I think the only change was the, uh, one with option nine, they took out one clause.
Right.
This is, it's something we do each year.
Yeah. So how many teachers do we get from NKU? Do anybody know, I mean?
About twenty, twenty-five.
And how long are they here?
Depends on the semester.
Okay.
And graduation date.
Okay. And so what do they assist teachers, shadow, job shadowing type thing?
Shadow internship, kinda like cases.
Okay.
After day.
Okay. Alrighty.
Teach some classes.
Okay.
A lot of teachers there with, less practice to teach it.
Okay. Very good. And then the contract was, so everybody good with seven, eight, and nine? Okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so I need a motion to remove consent agenda items three, five, and six.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to add, let me see, so now we're one, two, three, four, five. Right, Cam, we now have one, two. Six, right? Six? Now I need a motion to add seven. And that would be to pause or not, let me see, how are we gonna work that motion?
Temporarily pause the tuition reimbursement program until, uh, more information is obtained from the finance director.
Okay. Alrighty. Alrighty, so now I need a motion to add seven. You got how he said that, Cam?
So moved.
Alrighty. It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to approve consent agenda items one through seven.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Good, good discussion, good discussion, um. Alrighty, board comments, what did I put here? Alrighty. We, um, as you know, Ms. Sheffel left us, and we need to appoint a vice chair. Um, and, um, my recommendation is Mr. Aaron Sutherland.
Thank you. Didn't realize this was happening, did I? I didn't, I didn't know this was on my agenda. I was looking at all the other stuff and I just saw this, I was like.
Yeah, we did speak to Ms. Covington, and she passed for this, for this time. Uh, she is the most senior member, uh, but, and then Mr. Sutherland's behind her. And I didn't, and I've talked to Mr., uh, Curl as well as, and we have Mr. Davis, but, um, I think Ms', my recommendation is that we consider adding Mr., um, Aaron Sutherland as the vice chair.
I'll make the motion to appoint Aaron Sutherland as the vice chair.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Well, thank you, guys.
And we talk all the time anyway, so.
That's, you gotta talk to me more.
Oh, no.
But we do, we collaborate a lot, so, you know. Alrighty. Very good, any comments, Adam, Cam?
Um, the, I think the special education class, they have a, a watching ball tournament this weekend, I know some of the basketball players are going with them, it's like their coaches, and they're playing with them. So that's super exciting for the twenty-sixth, they were. Yeah, are you excited? I'm excited about it. I know, I was talking to, to Sean Jackson, he said that he had just come back from practice with them, he seemed super excited. So that's awesome.
It is, I, I tell you, our basketball team, those guys are terrific, the things they do in the school. It is. I I tell you, our basketball team, those guys are terrific. The things they do in the school and in the community is amazing. Uh someone was just telling me about something they did, and I said, yeah, those guys are amazing, they're just not great players, they're great human beings. And that is what needs to be told about their story, you know, so, thank you for sharing that. You know. Alrighty, and uh tell us a little bit about your accomplishments, I know you just-
In March, the the very last week in March, I wasn't here for the meeting, I was in Louisville with um Ms. Suzanne at CCLA, Family Career Community Leaders of America, and I competed in job interviews, so I presented, um, I was like, it was like a job interview, I presented why I think I should do the job. And I got first place at state.
Wow.
So I would be going to Seattle this summer, and for, and competing at the national level with another company.
That is excellent, that is amazing. See? Those stories need to be told.
Have Crowe know this?
Yes, yes, you better believe it.
I I just wanna say, I I I did the same, I did a job interview in FBLA, Future Business League, and I I I I I placed in region, but I've never placed in state, so I'm, I'm very impressed.
It's also my first year, which means I have a career in there, because it's a very-
Congratulations, Mom.
Thank you.
Tell us what else you're gonna do for prom.
Oh, I'm ready for prom, Princess, as well.
Congratulations, we are just so happy that you're a part of this.
I had a competition this past weekend, um I competed solo, and I got uh thirteen places out of like forty dances, so it was a very popular level on.
Yeah, yes you do, yes you do, but that's wonderful. But I think that's it for us. Uh we do have an executive session, I'm not sure if we're gonna take any action until we discuss it, but I think it's just an update and some recommendations, so I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?